Okay, I call this meeting to order.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Bradshaw, absent. Nelson, absent. Palmer?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Walden?
Here.
Okay, approval minutes. Motion to approve minutes on the September 3rd, 2025, council meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Palmer?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Okay, approval bills. Motion to approve payment of bills as a pair on war sheets.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Angel was, she said there will be some add-ons.
Yeah, there's gonna be three add-ons, two Horizon's and the credit for bill. Bill's gonna just have to, we're just gonna sign the checks and send them out so they're not late.
Okay, roll call.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes. Okay, public comments.
The Sarah Street crew is here again. Just to follow up with last meeting, I didn't see it on the agenda, so do we do it now?
He's still working on this guy that owns the building and, of course, his associate is here today. He can make it, but he's, he's working on, you know, this guy and see what we could do with this building.
Okay, I thought last time they said they were going to do some sort of nuisance exemption where they don't have to get ahold of the guy?
Uh, that was, he's working on with the court and he did not report on that. So that's, that's bars that he got on it.
Okay, so we should follow up. Should we come to a, um?
Committee of the whole?
Yes.
The, the attorney's not at the committee of the whole meetings unless he has called bill beforehand.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should just follow up next month?
He, he will be here at the next one in November.
Okay. Well, we're still battling them on Sarah Street, so.
I understand that.
We hope you can do something.
Sorry about the convening. Anybody else have any, but not me.
Hi guys, Benjamin Thompson here. I just have a couple of questions about the Baxmeyer subdivision project. We've talked about it in previous meetings, but I just wanted to get it on the record again. As far as the agent assigned to the project, I know it was a year-long contract that we signed with them, and I was just curious, when is that contract up?
I believe it's up in January, I believe.
I think it was January. I kinda remember when she came here and, so it probably would be January for.
It's January or February, but I, I think January.
Gotcha.
Because I looked one other time to check since then.
What's, what's the plan at the end of that contract? Is the, has there been any discussion about renewing it with the current agent, with exploring other options?
We have not talked about it. It's probably something that we need to, uh, we need to get the word out farther. I think evidently what she's doing, she's trying her best, but there are just not anybody out there wants to build right now.
Sure. Yeah, I understand. It's a tough market. And I was just curious, you know, when we get to the end of this period, is it worth considering, uh, opening up the doors where there's more than just one person who is allowed to solicit?
We need to get the word out farther, but, uh, as we talk to the meeting of the whole for next meeting in November, uh, we could discuss that.
Okay.
She, she did reach, she was the only relative that did reach out to us. I did talk to another relative, whatever, then she did, but they didn't respond. So, but I personally think that, um, come January, we definitely need to strategize different marketing for it. We, we need to market it, I think. And we gotta get it out there that these lots are for sale.
Sure.
So I don't know. And I think we could take money from the tip. We still have money in the tip account that we could use. Because I questioned that before to make sure, um, before we closed out the bill if, um, on that, um, for the subdivision. But they said we wouldn't wanna put that on the loan because it would make, we'd pay interest then on it. So we have money in the tip that we could use for that instead.
I, I remember that, uh, conversation from a couple of meetings ago.
She did call today and she said everything is the same, nothing's, no, no bites or no, no change or nothing yet. I thought I had a few people, uh, they looked at it, but nothing's happened yet.
I, I personally did reach out to a, um, um, a builder in Taylorville and just said, hey, are you aware that we have these lots? And he said he was gonna come over and look, but I don't know if he's done that or not.
Sure.
Or if he's gonna follow through with it.
All right. Well, thank you guys for the conversation. I just have one, one more question here on the same subject. So the lot price is marked at $5,000. Is there a financial incentive for the agent? You know, we know she's a long-time dedicated, uh, community member. Um, is there an incentive to sell these lots? And then, does that come out of the $5,000 price or is it added on to it from a commission standpoint?
Comes out of the $5,000.
So there is a?
Yeah, it's like a thousand or twelve hundred. Is it fifteen hundred?
Per lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, yes. Communications from the mayor. What I have, I'm still working on Chestnut Street. It's, it's a long process. Probably gonna be just as long. Uh, now that I'm working on, uh, of course, the house on where the road is this. We're just have to just keep on pegging on and do our best. And for the roads, all the roads west are oiled and finished. So next year, the east roads will get oiled, but he is done with the oiling. So no more messy roads until next year. And that's all I have. Um, Andrew?
Do you have anything?
I don't have anything to say there.
Okay. Uh, treasure?
I have a bill that we need to pay, I know, November the 6th for seventy-one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and four cents. And this is on our wastewater project, so it's just a payment that's due.
Okay.
Just gonna let you know.
Seventy-one thousand eight hundred fifteen. Yeah, seventy-one, eight hundred fifteen. Oh, due November 6th.
Okay, we have anything for older persons?
I have some things that I could wanna ask later.
Uh, you want to ask now?
Put in was about the, um, property on 101 North Chestnut, but you said that's still in the works?
Yes, now we got two people involved now.
I, I saw that, um, it was Scott Anderson, but now it just changed to leave the world of past, uh, uh, ministry or something?
Yeah, it's moved to him. Now it's both of them. Uh, Scott's in, still in this because of the attorney has dealings with him. So now they're both together and, uh, the last word was he wanted to rebuild it. So we're trying our best not to get this rebuilt. If you ever seen it, you would say, like, you understand.
But can't we just go ahead and say it's condemned?
So, we, we try, but since he quit playing dead to his minister, and then he's, he's tying everything up in court again.
Like even though he switched it, I think we can still do a condemn.
He hasn't said anything that we can do that. I, I bid it to the house on, uh, 1116 Poplar, 116th Poplar. But it's in the process and they could take it up to ninety days.
Okay. And then on David Riley's, it was, um, he's still, the attorney hasn't gotten any further on condemning that one and giving that?
Yeah, and Stephen's still working on, he's in court with that too.
Okay, and then my other question with the David Riley's, um, he has also a building on 205 North Chestnut and 316 North Hickory Street. Um, have we put liens on those? If not, we need to have the liens because we have bills against those properties. And then we probably need to look at maybe even condemning one of them.
What was your two, what, what addresses? I'm sorry. 205 Chestnut, Old Genel.
One is 205 North Chestnut.
Yeah.
And I think we already have a lien on that, but then they also have, he also owns 316th North Hickory Street.
There's somebody that lives in that one too.
Right, but there's also a bill that's owed to the city, so there needs to be a lien put on that.
We have a looking to it then.
For her water bill, we are shedding water off on the 7th of October at law.
Well, and it's, it's been his actual name, so I think we need to, since he owns, we already have one issue on Sarah Street. I think we're gonna have issues with those, so I think our attorney needs to address all three properties at the same time, maybe.
I'll speak with Steve over the subdivision more.
Thank you. And then the other one I had a question about was, I, see, this should probably be, um, um, later, um, was 105 North College Street, which is Bond, the old Bond?
Yes.
Because it, it switched hands again.
It's the same, it's the same guy.
It's Frontier Financial, but we, I know we have one lien on them, but then there's an issue with snakes and stuff there, so.
That's on the side that just sold, right?
I think so.
Yeah, because they still wanna have that lot.
So, but I think they're, I think they're in the.
They're underneath that tin chip.
So I, do we need to have our animal control try to do anything? I try to, I, I don't want to, but I, I would not want one in coming to my yard. And I looked up, they said to use those glue tapes for, that they use for mice. That was something.
Well, I, I talked to Jamie Seth, Mary.
Okay, about this?
And, you know, how you said about snakes. Ah, I don't know.
Yeah, so I don't know. I, I did read, you know, they said to use a garden hose if it's in your yard, or it said to use, um, those mousetraps that have the sticky glue. I just.
Well, also, there's a brush pile, probably like frost of it. Uh, somebody said there's snakes underneath it too, so, yeah.
Okay.
So gonna check into that.
I just want the people on Sarah Street, it's, I, I have researched, I have, I have contacted the, um, health department and I spoke to Dr. Chad Anderson. He said that, um, if we had to write something, but we actually, I read our ordinance then, we actually have, where we have someone that can take care of condemning the building and stuff like that. So it's just the paperwork that our attorney has to do to get, to take it to court and stuff like that. That's, it's just a process because he's been hard to find. And, um, he moves quite a bit, it sounds like, and makes a lot of changes. But it's, I, I, I know we have been working on it. I have done. I, you, if you wanna look and see what I have. I gave some paperwork to the other alderman too about what, uh, what Mr., uh, Dr. Chad Anderson said and stuff like that, so. And we do need to get it under control, so hopefully by the next meeting.
Yeah, I think I was, at least, I don't know about you guys, but I was kind of under the impression that after last month.
That it would be going to court.
Yeah, that they would bypass finding David Riley and.
Take it to court.
You know, get some sort of nuisance exception and have some sort of solution this month, which I, you know, the wheels turn slow, I know that. But we're just, we're, we'll continue to follow up and then if you need to give the lawyer any of our information to contact, that's, I'm sure all of us would be willing to, to.
Yeah. Hopefully he could go back and tell, um, tell him that, um, that's our biggest concern right now is the Sarah Street.
That needs to be our biggest concern.
Yeah, and in talking with, um, Travis wasn't able to make it tonight, but their pest control guy, um, Travis Vandermeersch, that was here last time, they said when they spray that house, they're all gonna flee again as well. So I, I mean, probably, you guys have a protocol, but the city probably needs to be in contact with the people on the street when this happens so that we can all prepare for a mass exodus, I hope, of the, from that house. And I don't know if we need to spray again or what, but that way everybody can be aware of what's happening. Keep an eye out in case they try to get back in everybody's houses.
So we need to ask Adam, and when he's going to have his sprayed again?
No.
Travis, I mean.
No, with the city.
Talk about when the city's getting ready to.
To do the Sarah house, yes. To do David Riley's house.
Yes.
We would definitely let all of you guys know. Hopefully that's not the case, but I, the bump man knows more than I do for certain.
Right, because that's what's gonna happen this.
Yeah.
But we have to get it under control before it gets worse.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, who knows how much further it's gone than people we just happen to know and have talked to, because I don't know anyone that lives behind Rachel and Travis.
Finally found one in my house.
Did you, because you're, you're back the other way and.
My cat got it.
I heard it's on popular street now too. So that's like three streets.
Geez Louise, okay.
Or four, that would be four streets.
Yeah.
So we have to do something. That has to be our top priority.
Which means it's gotta be in, on, some houses in between to get all the way to Poplar from.
Well, I'm right behind you.
Yeah, you're right behind him and you're, and, um, Janet, you're not far from, I don't know if you've had any trouble or any of your neighbors, but.
Well, I'm thinking that's getting close to the school too. I mean, we're getting over by the school and we've got primary school there, preschool kids, like, how far is it gonna go?
And I know with school districts, there's paperwork we have to do for spraying. So, but they have to, like, make parents aware and there's a protocol for that. So we, so it needs to get, it needs to get, it needs to be our top priority.
Excuse me, guys. On, on this subject of the Sarah Street House, um, I think it's important to acknowledge, you know, we refer to it as David Riley's property, you just did. All these properties are in rears as far as property taxes go. That property in particular will roll over to the, um, to the person who has a lien against it next year. So just strategy-wise, it's worth considering that very quickly, these aren't gonna be David Riley's properties anymore. It will be owned by somebody else.
Well, no one has paid the property taxes on that at this point.
Yeah, that's what, exactly. So there's a gentleman, the Sarah Street property, there's a gentleman in Forsyth who that's all he does is tax sales, and he's got the lien on it. The 205 building has a lien on it. I'm not sure about the Hickory Street one.
Um, actually the house, actually someone has paid for the last two years on the house on, uh.
Which would make sense because it's a revenue generating property for him, so he would wanna pay the taxes on it.
Not Riley has not paid. Someone else has paid the back taxes. Um, so what, maybe we need, I, I don't know how you go about contacting that person. I don't know if he's purchased them enough years. The person that has paid him is a man named Andrew.
Is including the doctor's name?
Yes. Yes. And I see he paid him for 2023 and 2024, and I, I think it's the three years you have to pay, don't you?
I don't know for certain. I don't do that type of law, but we can look at it.
Okay, so.
I thought it was two years. I thought it was two years back taxes.
Is it two?
Is it three?
I was thinking three.
It is three.
I thought it was two.
So, and, um, well, but it says subsequent, so on the third year for 2020, for 2025. So that man may already take those. And if he gets them, that would be in October this month, like October 24th, I believe.
True.
So you may need to investigate that with the, um, courthouse. Because I think this man, this Andrew, may own this come October 24th.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I'll communicate all this with Steve and all those papers.
Yes.
Are you saying the only house on Sarah is this person is paying tax?
Someone has paid the back taxes on that house. So I think, if I'm right, that's where the attorney needs to double check. If I'm correct, I think this person takes possession of this property in October 24th. I'm not sure how that all works, so that's where the attorney needs to check into that.
The three-year process of putting a lien on it, it's a percentage between zero and 12%, that's, that's three years. And then there's an entire, another legal process that has to happen at the end of the three years. The, whoever owns the property still has the opportunity to come in and pay all the back taxes up until the very last day, which would be roughly October 20th, I believe. And then it'll be another six months roughly to go through all the processes the county has to go through. They have to do a, a public notice. There's several things that have to happen, so it will push it into next year.
Right, okay. But I did print this out so he can check into that. Thanks, Ken. I, I, yes, I, sorry.
Okay, old business. Anybody have any old business? How about new business? And we have our engineer update.
Yes, uh, we'll start off with the, uh, water treatment plant. Uh, we're slowly coming along with getting the roof onto the building. Uh, had a few issues and setbacks, uh, like any other job, uh, coming around, but it looks like we're gonna be closed in before winter time. Uh, we have some lead time on equipment that's gonna be coming in for the processing plant, so, uh, we're well underway with the water treatment plant. Our other two, uh, other three projects, um, the lead service replacement, the water main extension and replacement of the sewer has been extended on its contract to finish for another sixty days. It is not due to the contractor's ill performance or anything of that nature. What we're looking at is here, he's trying to round out the rest of his season. He's got other jobs as well. He's losing labor. The labor holes are empty. Uh, we're seeing it across the board from downstate Illinois all the way to Schaumburg and Indiana. It's just that times of the year, we call this the contractor's push, uh, from October all the way into the first week of December. We have very limited days to try and get as much done as we can with, uh, before the inclement weather closes in on us. So everybody's trying to pull you on every job that you've signed on to for this year. So we've extended their contract. They've actually got, uh, about two weeks worth of work, or ten days. But for him to actually get that negotiated, trying to close out his other projects and get it into scope and get everything finished up, he'd asked for the sixty-day time period to finish up because you guys are adding six more additional water services onto your water service replacement, uh, project. And then the sewer just has some final ready, and Steve.
Anything else?
Um, other than the next upcoming committee, uh, meeting, I will probably get ahold of you guys and schedule for just interior finishes, samples, last picks. And we'll have the building contractor there with us as well, so I will inform you guys on when that actual, uh, meeting will come up.
Okay, we're, motion approved invoice of water treatment plan. Verdict heating and plumbing district, district sprint, four hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty cents. Chastening invoice, eleven thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-four cents. Total, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and two dollars and sixty-four cents. I'll make the motion. Okay, roll call.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes. And motion to approve, approve the illusion of J and R Diesel, 301 South Chestnut. The illusion of 2025 dash four. If I have the motion, I'll make the motion.
What's the resolution number of it?
Twenty twenty-five dash four. Need a second.
Okay, roll call.
We need a second.
I, I'll second. Porter?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes. Okay, and motion to approve contract for J and R Diesel, 301 South, uh, Chestnut.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Porter?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
And motion to approve ordinance to amend the code of grocery tax, ordinance number H40.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Palmer?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Did you get your question answered? I saw you posted something.
I did, and yeah, I just wanted to go online and see it. I, I do the ordinance, so I have that stuff.
Okay.
And motion to approve purchase of rock for $4,000. Dana, what was that for?
The rock that he had hauled in was wet.
Yeah.
And then they used some from the township and to replace it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Okay, roll call.
Porter?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes. Okay, motion to approve trick and treat hours from five to eight for October 30th and 31st.
I made the motion to approve trick and treat hours from five to eight on October 30th and 31st.
I made the motion to approve trick and treat hours from five to eight on October thirteenth and thirty-first.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call?
Walden.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Porter. Palmer.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to executive session, and the public is gonna have to leave.
Is there a subsection in the...
Personnel.
Personnel.
See one?
Is there anything you guys need new for, or...